And me on the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rivas, could you please call roll?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Let's see, Vice Chair Friend.
Happily present.
Chair Gopper.
Here.
Commissioner Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
And Commissioner List.
Here.
All right, so we have no closed session report tonight, so we will move on to adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so that passes unanimously. Moving on to our consent calendar, our consent calendar tonight is approving the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of September 6, 2022. Would any member of the public like to make a comment on an item on the consent calendar, which is the planning commission meeting minutes? All right, I see none, so back to the commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed.
Abstain due to absence.
Okay, one abstention from Commissioner Friend. So we will now move on to, there's no items pulled from the consent calendar, so items of interest to the public, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on tonight's agenda and in the subject matter that was in the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on an item tonight that is not on the agenda? All right, I see none. So we will, Mr. Rivas, do we have any written communications?
We have no written communications, Chair Gopper.
All right, great. And we have no presentations or educational workshop sessions tonight, so we will be moving on to our public hearing. This is a public hearing for site plan review, SRT 22-06. And Ms. Hunter, could you please provide the staff report?
Yes, sorry, that's SPR, I made a mistake in the agenda. So SPR 22-06 is a request from the applicant to construct a residential duplex located at 3095 Cedar Ravine Road within the Cedar Ravine Historic District. The project will include extending the existing curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Cedar Ravine Road up Victor Lane.
Excuse me, can you put your mic down?
Oh.
Thank you.
Do you need me to repeat from the beginning, or start from the beginning, or continue on? Okay.
You're good.
The project will include extending the existing curb, gutter, and sidewalk along Cedar Ravine Road up Victor Lane by approximately 20 feet, as well as the placement of a concrete driveway between the proposed duplex and Victor Lane to permit access to the garage of each unit. The proposed duplex has one parking space in Unit 1's garage, two parking spaces in Unit 2's garage, and one parking space in the paved driveway adjacent to the duplex. This satisfies the parking requirements set forth in the Placerville Zoning Ordinance Section 10-4-4, which is one and a half spaces per unit. Unit 1 of the proposed duplex is a single-story dwelling of approximately 1,200 square feet with the front entrance facing Cedar Ravine Road. Unit 2 is a two-story dwelling of approximately 2,600 square feet with the front entrance facing Victor Lane. The architectural style for the duplex includes cross-gabled roof design, decorative trim and railing siding, covered patio at the front entrances, and double-hung windows. These stylistic elements are comparable with the residential and professional buildings in the project vicinity and within the historic district. The color scheme for the development is a combination of three colors, Sherwin-Williams' Rare Gray, Casablanca, which is a cream color, and Pewter Green. The accents on both units will be painted Pewter Green, while the body and trim will alternate between the two remaining colors for each unit. Utilities to support the development are already in place due to the previous single-family dwelling that was located on the parcel. Following review of the request, staff finds that the request qualifies for a categorical exemption under CEQA Guideline Section 15303, new construction, and Section 15332, infill development. It is staff's opinion that the architectural style, scale, and mass of the development project are similar to and compatible with those of the immediate vicinity, and therefore are consistent with the city's design criteria for the new development within a historic district. Further, the project meets the primary objective of R3 zoning, falling within the allowable density for the parcel, and provides adequate parking for the development. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, adopt the findings of fact in support of SPR 22-06, and conditionally approve the project based on the findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval provided in Attachment A.
All right, thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff?
The applicant is not here tonight, is that correct?
They are not, no.
So I don't know if he'll be able to answer my questions, but let's give it a go. I'm a little concerned about the retaining wall at the rear of the lot and tree protection. Did you talk to the applicant about that, or are they aware of measures they need to take to protect the root zone for those existing trees?
It was not something that was discussed between us and the applicant at this time.
Mr. Rivas, can you maybe answer or address that? Is that something that, as this project would progress, that, you know, staff could talk to them about measures they need to take?
Sure, we can certainly do that to make sure as part of their grading permit and their site improvements, that they do what they can to protect the root zone of that tree within the, yeah, we can certainly do that. There's nothing preventing the applicant from removing all the trees, but we do look at trying to preserve all the mature landscape trees on a piece of property.
It is, yeah, something that they mentioned in their application, they're trying to preserve the native trees, and so, you know, want to help them attain that goal. I realize that, you know, things may come up, they may not be able to protect them, but I think every effort should be made to do so. Okay, um, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff?
If I recall, so this is the site where we had a demolition about two years ago, right?
That is correct.
Bit of a challenge. Was Mr. McDermott the owner of the property then?
Yes.
He was one of, he's not here this evening?
He is not.
Okay, did he give a reason why he's not here, or just not here?
He didn't, his contractor is out of the state, so.
All right, thanks.
All right, since the applicant is not here, I will now open the public hearing and invite the public to come up and speak on this item. You will have three minutes to address the commission with your comments.
Been up several times. There were designs shown of at least the plot of where two duplexes could go in, and there were questions raised about the styling and whether it would be consistent with an historic district, and the answer was, it's something you'll take up in site review. So here we are. When the staff says that this is consistent with houses in the area, that's easy to say because it's a real hodgepodge, there's been lots of things over the years. What I would recommend to you is numbers 3, 4, and 5. Or number 1 is the Kembelik House. Now that's Alan and June Kembelik had it. And then the house that was taken down was also Kembelik. The original property in the 1850s was Ingeser, and then in came Kembelik and Blair's, and families expand and they divide. But those show you some of the key elements that can be preserved in this kind of plan without major expenses. Takes the same square footage. One, you'd have the overlapping wood, the lapped siding, then you'd have gabled roof, and again, I'd urge you to look at numbers 3 and 4, because those are buildings that look a lot like what was taken down. And you'll notice that on their plans, they have metal railings. Well, there's no need for metal railings, you can use wood railings like you had before. And they're not expensive. You approved one not long ago over on Sacramento Street, and that had wooden porch, and lapped siding was ultimately added after city council review. So that was the original style. What we know is that when it comes to the windows, you can have modern windows, double pane, triple pane, argon gas, but it can look like the old ones. And the old ones had sections of glass, square sections. You went to the hardware store, one broke, you replace it with a section. So the same windows are available from the same companies, only you have it sectioned off into like four sections that are squares. That's an additional thing that could be done, that would make it that way. I've mentioned before that I learned the hard way, when my contractor said it had to be compliant with the code, those windows, and then later I find out that in order to make it, I have to retrofit it and come in with vinyl strips to give that section look. So those are the key features that you had in the original design. And so when you look at numbers 1, 3, and 4, you're going to see the designs, features that were common throughout that area.
Could you please wrap up your comments, Kirk?
Yeah, I keep looking up, somebody isn't counting. And you're not with me, you gotta do it. Okay, so to wrap it up, what I'd recommend is you send it back to have those design changes make, to make it consistent with the original design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ruth Michelson, building owner, 352 Main Street. I'd like to start with asking the question, why do we have historic districts? What's the point? I know that you're going to be having a training coming up, once you find a person to give you the training, both the planning commission and the city council, this was to be done last spring, but you know that Michael Friend was gone for a month, and then it was delayed and delayed, and I actually called Pierre today, Pierre Rivas, and asked him about it, and he said the funding is there, but you just need to find the right person to give that training. And I actually think Kirk has some good leads on that. So you have a historic district, and I believe it's to try to preserve the look and the appropriate time period of the houses in that area. And this is a little difficult, because many times someone will come to you needing to do a repair, and you talk to them about the type of siding, the type of window, et cetera, et cetera, to keep consistent. So now this is a brand-new structure, and I read the staff report, and you know, there's a lot of references in the staff report that are unfortunately, you know, not relevant to new construction, so this is a bit different, but you know, when I look at the site plan for this house, I gotta say, it doesn't say historic to me. It looks like a big box block house from the 60s, with, it started to be popular in the 60s with the garage underneath. You've got a 2,600 square foot house, main house, what is it, three-bedroom, I can't remember, two or three-bath, and then you've got a 1,200, almost 1,200 little add-on, kind of like a granny flat, added on to the side of it. And I suppose you can call it officially a duplex, but it's truly a big, main family house with a little house tacked on. And, yeah, I don't think it adds in any way to the historic district, I think it takes away. I think that there's other architectural elements that could have been put into place besides horizontal siding. I'm not particularly impressed by the gable roofs. You know, I'm not an architect, but I'm just a layperson looking at it, and you have an opportunity here to add to the value and to the look of your historic district, and this to me is a detractor. So I would ask you to really consider, why do we have historic districts? What is the point? And does this add to that historic district, or does it detract? Thank you.
Thank you. There any other public comment on this item? All right, I see none, so we will bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I just had one question about, when I was reading through the application and they discussed the hardy board, that is the appearance of the sort of overlapped wood.
The lapped siding.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions, comments?
Well, get the conversation going. I think this is a wonderful proposal. I appreciate the comments that we got from the public about preserving the look of our historic district, and I feel that this actually is a wonderful, you know, representation. It's somewhat simple, I think the house that was there, that fell into disrepair, was very simple, you know, with a front porch and kind of a steep slope roof and so on. I like the appearance from Cedar Ravine. The garage door is over on the, I think it's that Victor Lane side, so you actually have, I think, an attractive entrance, and they've stepped back the two-story, larger unit is in the back, so the appearance from Cedar Ravine is actually, you know, I think quite nice. I like their proposed color choices, and of course, the materials that they are proposing to use, the cement fiber board, hardy plank, is, you know, I talk a lot about fire safety, but that is the modern, you know, recommended building material, but it also has, can have a really nice texture, a nice feel to it. So I'm very much in favor of this. The other details, I think, you know, metal trim here and there is not out of line with, you know, other railings that you might see on a vintage house. And I do want to disclose, I made a site visit to the property and drove up Victor Lane, there is a, I think there's two units adjacent to this lot. And I think as far as being in harmony, this goes very well with that. There's also some other new construction about a block away. I think, you know, this neighborhood is transitioning, but the city has been able to keep a feel of, you know, yes, modernizing, but keeping a really nice feel to these houses. And across the street, there's also been some, there's a mix of new and old, and so, you know, given this hybrid, I think that this is a really good proposal. So I'll let the other commissioners speak to that.
Commissioner Lepper?
Yeah, I agree with you. I think that the, I do see them as two separate abodes, if you will, and I liked the fact that the larger one was in the back, and that the front one actually has a very similar feel to both the house that was taken down and to the houses that are across the way and near the property. I also thought that it was a really good use of space to provide two dwellings in our neighborhood, that is really important right now, as we all know with housing being in high demand and need. And I thought that the decorative trim, the porch design were thoughtful and compatible, as well as the roof and the design, the sort of added trim. And, you know, if you talk about what the opportunity that we have, which is true, I think we are falling in line with preserving the look, because it could be a huge cement square. You know, there's a lot of places that don't have consistency, and you have such difference in the houses, and I think this actually falls in line with what is there. So I agree that I thought, and the covered porch also was directly in line and looks really nice from the front, so I agree with and echo Chris's comments.
Commissioner List?
Yeah, I think the only concern I have is not having divided lights in the windows, which would be more consistent with the neighborhood.
In the side windows?
I'm talking about everywhere. If you're going to do it on the front, you're going to do it elsewhere, and that would be my only recommendation. And I agree with one person in the audience that said something about the metal use as railing on the front. I think that would be better if it was, if it was the traditional two-by-two of some sort of wood. But other than that, I like the use, the way it sits on the property. Yeah.
Commissioner Friend?
I'm going to abstain as part of my consistent objection to the applicant not being present, and there's no opportunity to ask questions and ask for things, frankly. And I would have thought Mr. McDermott, given the controversy of the demolition, would have made an effort to be here or would have asked for it to be postponed, so that's my objection. But having said that, you know, it's interesting, I didn't realize, I was at the property site but failed to notice 3094, which is right across the street. I lived in 3094 in the 80s, when my mother-in-law at the time owned it, and boy, it was dilapidated. I don't recall this coming, this unit was refurbished, Pierre, and I don't recall it coming to commission for, I guess they didn't change it substantially enough that we had to see it.
Commissioner Friend, staff took note of the address, and we will investigate.
Yeah, I don't remember, but it's a marked improvement over what I lived in. Between the two structures, and I agree with Commissioner List, that if there were the, there's a name for these, but I can't think, in the windows, the, the divided windows all throughout, that would actually tie this proposal in nicely with that, and I think otherwise they're fairly compatible. The one thing that I wanted to request of the applicant, and it wouldn't be a condition, because I don't think we have the prerogative to condition it, but this property does have some history associated with it. And I always felt that we really lost something when we approved the demolition, and the applicant was willing at the time to place a marker, like a historical marker at the corner, the corner perhaps of Victor and Cedar Ravine, to describe what it was. So as people walked by it, there would be some, you know, some little bit of history left for people to see. I would still ask that of Mr. McDermott, you know, if you have the opportunity to talk with him, we can't compel it, but he was willing, and I think it would add tremendous value to me. So other than that, I'm going to abstain.
All right. So I just would sort of echo some more comments. I do think, you know, the horizontal wood siding, the gable roof, those features fit in nicely with the surrounding buildings, and it is consistent with our, you know, ordinance as written. Doesn't say you need to build a historic house in there, it just says it needs to aesthetically fit in with the surrounding community. I do, you're to see the same concern on the metal railings, so I would be open, I think that's a feature that kind of stands out, too, and you do know there's some other houses maybe in there with metal railings, but the previous house had wood railings, and a lot of the neighboring houses have wood railings. And I also sort of see the comment on the dividing line in the windows, so if those are things we wanted to condition, I'd be open to doing that.
I definitely am on board with the windows, I think it's not a big huge change, and I think it would add.
And be consistent with the ones in the front.
And I have no objection to the metal changing up for wood if it's not a significant change either, so I appeal to the both of those.
Commissioner Keeney, any further?
On the divided light windows, would you be satisfied with requiring on just on the Cedar Ravine side? They're proposing sliders, you know, I'm seeing three different styles. This one looks, I don't know if this is too long, I mean, that's what I'm looking at here, slider there, but for a consistent feel from Cedar Ravine, having the divided lights on that face, or how do you feel about that? Do you think that makes?
After designing as many homes as I have, I would never put a different type of window on one side that I wouldn't put on the others.
So on anything seen from either Victor or Cedar Ravine?
And you're not talking any more money, very, if anything, it's a very, very little amount of money to do it on all windows.
And there's the metal railing, you know, fire safety, but the majority of the house is going to be the cement fiber board, and of course, Class A roofing, I'm sure everything else is going to be, well, everything will be to the current building codes which require fire safety, so.
May I address that?
Yeah, so I could see requiring wood railings instead of the proposed metal.
May I address that?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
Question for Pierre. Fire suppression system in this house is indoors, are they required to do that on the covered patio, or the covered front porch?
I do not believe so. I think the spankering of the units would be interior only.
Okay.
Further questions, comments?
And where can we add these amendments to the conditions of approval? Would that come under Section 1E, structural elevations, is that, or should we just add another condition of approval? We have eight currently.
I'm thinking for just simplicity, if the planning commission would fashion just direction to staff, that we add some, one additional condition addressing the railing will be changing a swap-out from the metal to the wood slats, the two-by-two, as Commissioner List spoke of, and then that all windows would be the same on all elevations, and that being the split-pane windows. Keep it real simple, and we'll direct, we'll fashion a condition of approval for that.
An additional condition?
An additional condition, yes.
I wanted to bring one other thing to your attention, the commission as well as staff. Mentioned the tree protections, the trees are, the tree table is wrong on the site plan, they've identified oaks, there are black walnuts, and the other two trees are Sierra redwoods, not coastal, but that's, they just say redwood, and there's just a table that's, a tree table, it's on most of the pages of the site plan. So that needs to be amended, and I'm not sure exactly how to direct that. See, I had some notes here, maybe under Number 1A, Planning and Site Plan Review Application, just a tree table will be amended to reflect the proper tree species on site. So under 1A, and then I would like the commission to consider adding a little detail under Condition 4, other applicable requirements. I would like to bring attention to our vegetation management ordinance, and so I've worked on some language, but essentially per City of Placerville Vegetation Management Ordinance 1698, that the black walnut that is overhanging Victor Lane, let's see, will be pruned, canopy raised, to remove the vegetation as needed to ensure safe ingress and egress across Victor Lane. Our vegetation management ordinance says that, you know, that's hazardous, and hazardous vegetation may, I'm reading from our ordinance, delay, hinder, or interfere with operations of a fire department, egress of occupants. And I want to bring this to your attention, because as, you know, my volunteer work, people have, who live up in that neighborhood, have brought that to my attention, that it is a bit of a problem. It's already, Victor Lane is a narrow road, one black oak in particular, and I think there is also a, now I'm forgetting the species, there's another tree that's overhanging, and since they're going to be doing quite a bit of site work anyway, this is a time for the. for the proponent to take care of that problem, so that we have improved safety. So that's, would be 4A, if you'd consider that. And then 4B, I want to talk about the native tree root protection plan. And again, allow city staff to review whatever plan they bring forward, since these are native trees, they've said they wanted to protect them, but I just want to make sure that they get good guidance, and we do what we can to protect these existing trees. So those are two things I, you know, would like to hear your thoughts about adding that to the conditions of approval.
Chair, Dr. Gibbs, I could make a quick comment. Yeah, staff would be in agreement to daylight the requirement that when they're actually doing grading work on the site, that they protect, you know, the integrity of the trees. But with regards to the ordinance you referenced, I believe that's the hazardous vegetation and defensible space ordinance. We are required to do an inspection of the site. This is a brand-new building, new development of the site, to ensure conformance with that ordinance. So it's unnecessary to actually have it as a requirement. It's something that staff will do. And even if this was something else, like if you cite even another property, let us know, and we can certainly inspect the site and work with the property owner to bring it into compliance.
That regarding the vegetation management, but ordinance reference, but I would, your recommendation is that we can still have the tree root protection zone approved by staff?
Yes, I think that's a very appropriate idea. We'll make sure then that we relay that to the applicant.
Well, I've done my due diligence here, bringing it to your attention, and I'm sure you'll pass that on to inspection staff. It is a concern, and I, you know, I think that they can take care of it pretty easily, really, as they move forward with the rest of their site work.
Yeah, we certainly will, and it will be part of the final inspection prior to providing certificate of occupancy of the property.
Just curious, do you know for sure it's a black walnut or is it an English walnut? Size of the leaves? English walnut are real small.
I think it is a black walnut. Now, you know, I just did, I didn't take a sample and key it out, but.
If it's black walnut, I won't be around if they knock it over, because I like to have it, but that's besides the point.
When you say, when you say take a sample and key it out, do you mean running it through, like, a taxonomy chart?
Yeah, I did not. I just wanted to.
I just wonder what you meant by key it out?
Key it out, yeah, right.
Yeah, staff will certainly identify the tree species there and make sure it's correct on the table to be resubmitted.
Are there further questions? Does somebody want to turn that into a motion?
I think so. Unless you have a handle on it? No, I don't know. I stumble and kind of work it as I go through, but I will, would like to make the motion to adopt the staff report as part of the topic record and make the findings of fact that are listed therein of the project request and the site, of which there are seven, and approve SPR 22-06 along with the recommended conditions of approval amended as under 1A, which is the Planning and Site Review Application. Amend the tree table used in the plan set to reflect the proper tree species. Going on, there's 2, 3, and then under 4, the amendment 4A, Native Tree Root Protection Plan or Tree Retention Plan will be given to city staff for review and approval. Also, we have made an additional condition of approval, number 9, that staff will work with the applicant to address changing the railing from proposed metal to wood, and all windows will be the same style, and that is a divided light style throughout the building. Thus concludes my motion, Chair.
Okay, I have got.
Will the maker of the motion accept a friendly amendment? I might change my vote to a yea vote.
That sounds like bribery here.
I mean, I am really unhappy with the fact the applicant's not here, but the language would say, "Request the applicant to consider," it's not a requirement, "Request the applicant to consider the construction of a historical marker at the corner of the property relative to the Taylor House," I think, just the suggestion.
I would appreciate your support, but no, I'm not in favor of that amendment. You know, when we considered this site before, it was the demolition permit, and, you know, we had a lot of information presented to us, and the historical record doesn't reflect significance. Yes, you know, someone in our community did live there.
It's more than somebody in our community, though. There was definite ties, there were definite historical ties. It was more than just somebody in the community. That's right, I appreciate the opportunity.
In all deference to you, I decline the amendment to the motion to approve.
All right, so we have a first and a second?
Second by?
List. So first by Heaney, second by List. Is there any further discussion, or do you want to move on to a vote? All right, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Just a point of order. Vice Chair, I was going to first ask Vice Chair Friend. Now, he abstained at the beginning, but then he indicated that he was actually going to vote on that.
I might come back ends, or to use a short-tank term, but don't worry about it.
So you're still abstaining?
I will, yes, I will abstain.
So Vice Chair Friend abstain. Chair Gopper?
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 4 with one abstention by Commissioner Friend. So we are now going to move on to, we have no continued items tonight, so we will move on to new business. New business, item 12.1, tentative map 0501E5, and it looks like this is Mr. Rivas. Could you please provide the staff report?
Thank you very much, Chair Gopper, members of the planning commission. We are concerning ourselves with Cottonwood Park Phases 4 and 6. And to give a little history, this subdivision was approved by the city council on October the 29th of 2010. Cottonwood Park Phases 4 and 6 is a phased 39 parcel, single-family residential plan development, consisting of three parcels totaling approximately 6.2 acres in size. Phase 4 contains 19 single-family residential parcels, and Phase 6 would contain 20 single-family residential parcels. The subdivision is generally located north of Clay Street, east of the Cottonwood Park Apartments, more specifically at the north end of Constellation Avenue, approximately 100 feet north, from its intersection with Clay Street and is adjacent and south of Rodan Court and Poverty Hill Drive. The current developer of the project has completed most of the tentative map conditions of approval and is preparing for submittal of the final map. This map will expire on April 26th of 2024, so it looks like they have plenty of time to complete and submit their map. Condition of approval number 27 requires that the draft covenants, conditions, and restrictions, CCNRs, be submitted and approved by the planning commission for review and approval. Condition of approval 27 reads as follows. The conditions, covenants, and restrictions which must be recorded with the final map must be submitted and approved by the planning commission. CCNRs must conform to the development requirements as approved in the previous phases of this project. Include restrictions of any future development of open space areas. And then there's subsection A, which reads Phases 4 and 6 shall be included in the existing Cottonwood Lighting and Landscaping Maintenance District, and said districts shall be formed concurrent with the filing of the final map. I just want to call to the commission's intention that the city is actually going to form a Community Facilities District instead of a Landscaping Maintenance District, which is staff's feeling that this is a more efficient and appropriate means of providing for the funding of the improvements within these phases. With respect to subsection A, that the establishment of the Community Facilities District is currently underway. We have an consultant working on it, and they are working with both our finance department and our engineering department to ensure that it adequately is addressing the costs of those improvements that are just germane to Phases 4 and 6 rather than the rest of the subdivision. So in discussion, staff reviewed the 11 conditions of approval that were identified that needed to be addressed in the conditions, covenants, and restrictions, and these numbers being 27, 28, 36, 47, 59, 60, 68, 70, 76, 94, and 106. The table in attachment 2 of your staff report shows the relevant conditions of approval and the corresponding section contained in the CCNRs, and the recommended changes are summarized as follows in your staff report, and they're actually fairly minor, so I won't even read those unless there's any particular questions that the commissioners may have. One of them that I will just briefly talk about has to do with the retaining walls. Staff will be finding at the time when we bring this to the city council for their review and approval prior to recording the map, that the retaining walls, the rockery walls that are there, I don't know if any of the commissioners had a chance to actually walk to site, but you can see those rockery walls. For the most part, they're all contained wholly within private parcels, so we're not going to impose that on the overall development then to pay for their maintenance. Individual property owners will have, you know, they're going to treat their properties differently, and so they'll be responsible for those walls that are fully contained within their private property. None of these walls were affecting any of the, would be city-maintained or city rights-of-way or public spaces where then we would include them with HOA, or, I mean, with the Community Facilities District. So that's the reason for those changes. We're recommending a change on page 15, that's Section 5.8. It's just a very minor change where we reference the Public Works Department. We want to change that to the Engineering Department, since they would be the ones reviewing the design of any pumping system to the specifications suitable for taking the sewage material from the home to the city main. And I think the only other one that I want to just highlight is that we just call out, we just called to the attention of the drainage easements and reference to the detention pond, and that detention pond is already constructed and exists on the site down at the, would be at the southeast corner of that site, for those of you that have walked it. And so that would be the open space area as well that the community, the CFD, would be responsible then for. So the CCNRs containing staff's report provided a modification version, and that's in attachment 1, so the changes, and again, it's not very many, I think it's only five changes. We show those changes as underlined in strikeout, and we also highlighted those changes in bright yellow, so you can clearly see the changes that are made. The conditions of approval for Cottonwood 4 and 6 are also provided in attachment 3 for reference. We're not able to modify any of those. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the CCNRs as amended in attachment 1. I would just add that, you know, staff apologizes for the large amount of materials. It's just one of those things where the CCNRs were quite lengthy, and so we had to provide you with the entire document. We also had to provide you with the conditions of approval, so that you yourselves could review and make sure staff isn't missing anything. But it has been reviewed by staff and by the engineering department, so we feel we've captured everything that needs to be captured. And staff did receive a couple of other questions on this, and so our review is basically limited to just these areas. The city is not responsible for the enforcement of CCNRs. That'll be up to the HOA. They will do the enforcement. One piece of this is, there is a condition that we will come back to the planning commission in the future with some, I would say, preliminary drawings or elevations of the homes that are going to be built and landscaping. And so you will have some discretion in looking at what these houses are going to look like and what the landscaping should look like, and that will come before you for review and approval prior to finaling the final map. That's another requirement. So with that, concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Thank you.
Are there questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I struggled to find the labeling of like attachment 1, 2, and 3, and I don't know if anybody else did. So mine aren't labeled, so I kind of guessed the documents you're talking about. There's one, this one document here, conditions of approval, I'll just hold up, conditions of approval, TSM 05-01-E5. Is that something that no changes can be made to? And trust me, I've tried to go through some of this and fell asleep on more than one occasion.
Okay, so you are, you are looking at the CCNRs?
I don't know what this document is. Looks like that.
Those are the conditions of approval that the city council approved, right?
Those are the conditions, now that my glasses on, I can see them from here, so.
If you go to number 36, then, does that need to be changed?
No. The modifications of the conditions of approval are not before you, and we cannot change them.
All right.
So basically what happens, just so you understand the process, the final map process is a ministerial process. It's not discretionary. So basically, staff, at the time they file their final map with the city, we will do a very in-depth review, ensuring substantial consistency with the conditions of approval. And then we take that to the city council, just for their cursory review. Again, it's ministerial, we can't change the COAs.
I guess my question is, though, this particular one is dealing with those retaining walls, which you've determined doesn't apply, because retaining walls are in private property. So this is incorrect, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, it's not incorrect. We're not proposing to change it, but we will make a full report to the city council of how that condition is addressed. And basically, there are no retaining walls or rockery walls that are, that would affect either city right-of-way or an open space or a park or anything like that, that would, then, we would subject that to maintenance. The cost of that would be burdened by the CFD. So in this case, we don't have that. And so we would find that they're in substantial conformity with that condition.
Okay, thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions, staff?
A question, now, the conditions of approval, staff has recommended some slight modifications, especially about the retaining walls. Will staff present to city council an amended version that reflects these changes, particularly, Ms. Neves, your memo that has Condition 36 and 76, you know, strikeout, red, underlined, so you're going to have one more version of the conditions of approval that go to city council?
No.
No?
And staff apologizes for the confusion. Basically, there was internal discussion about those conditions of approval. Again, it's ministerial. Staff will make a report on the conformity of the final map with the condition of approval. We have to show, we're required on the MAP Act that they comply with all the conditions of approval. So we're not amending the conditions of approval, they will remain as they are, but we will then provide an explanation as to why they're substantially consistent with the condition of approval. Not a change to the COAs. The COAs.
The COAs are not before you.
Ms. Neves, would you like to make any comment?
I would. Director, we've also done a fabulous job summarizing the project, and thank you very much. The intent of my comment letter was just for a clarification for bookkeeping. You know, at the time when the conditions were developed, the location of the final location of the rockery walls was unknown. It was also at a time, too, when the rockery walls themselves may not have been considered or recommended, and enough time had passed from the initiation of that tentative map to where what is now constructed in the field, there has been significant improvements in the development and construction of rockery walls, where they are now an accepted form of construction for retaining walls locally and countywide. The intent of that memo was basically to just kind of highlight some of the bookkeeping that we kind of have to catch up on, on what I would consider dated conditions is all. That's it. But Pierre Rivas is correct, the conditions are not before you as an action item this evening. It's just the consideration for approval of the CCNRs.
Yeah, if I can just piggyback on what City Engineer Neves said, and I'd forgotten about that. There is a specific condition of approval that basically states you cannot have rocky rolls, rockery walls in this subdivision. But as Ms. Neves stated, it's now a more than acceptable feature, and we believe that it's a more aesthetically and suitable type of wall, and so we will report all of that back as to why city staff is allowing a rockery wall where the conditions of approval said it wasn't. And again, that will happen when we take our report to the City Council.
So I kind of had a question as well related to the retaining walls, with their removal from section 1.7, or 7.1, which is the responsibility of the CCNRs, if they should be added into section 7.2, which is owner's responsibilities? So there's a list there under 7.2 of owner's responsibilities that goes through a number of things, utility connections, landscaping, fences, graffiti. Should retaining walls be added to that list?
In staff's opinion, that is an excellent catch, Chair Gopper, and we can certainly add it to that section.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And I would just note, for the record, there are no members of the public in the room. Your staff. Are there any other questions or comments that people would like to make on these?
No, just to add, and I don't think this is relevant to anything, but just that there was one additional change in the document that we reviewed on page 30, which is just a spelling correction.
To approve the conditions, covenants, and restrictions as amended in attachment 1 and reflecting the conversation of the Commission. We identified.
Adding retaining walls to.
Moving the retaining wall to 7.2.
Yep.
Owner's responsibility, which was an excellent, just excellent, beautiful.
My second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further questions?
I have one more question for staff. Condition of approval 106. Is this the last sentence? Second to last sentence. CCNRs, the Planning Commission shall review said provisions for youth activity equipment. There isn't any proposed, so it does, is that point now just moot?
Yeah, that's a moot point. It may have been, it may have been a carryover from the conditions of approval on some previous phases with respect to George Duffy Park.
Okay, great. Nothing else from me.
All right, so we have a first and a second to approve the conditions, conveyance, and restrictions with the addition of retaining walls to owner's responsibilities. Could I get a roll call vote?
Vice Chair Friend?
Aye.
Chair Gopper?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner List?
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 5-0. So we are now going to move on to item number 13, matters from Commissioners and staff, 13.1, staff reports. Do you have any reports for us tonight?
I do, actually. So we recently updated the zoning ordinance for the short-term rentals, so we have a new ordinance, if you guys would like your packets updated. If you want to bring your binders either to the office or coordinate with me, we can give you the new sections. Most of the changes were to chapters 4 and 5, but there are some changes to chapter 1 and the table of contents.
I just have one item to report, and I've been in contact with the Mackinac Hotel developers. That's the hotel that's been sitting out there in Smith Flat for, what, 20 years now? They have submitted their plans, and so we're looking at those plans to determine what the fees are, and they will let us know when they actually pull the trigger, so we'll begin our formal review, so we're very happy to report that.
So they got their county approvals? Because if I remember, there were some approvals they had to get from the county, because there was some encouragement on county land.
Yeah, I don't know what the status is on that. This is just review of the plans. It's not issuing any building.
No, no, I get it, but I would think that they wouldn't even move forward if they were having any issues with the county, so that's good to hear. Any more good news? We have a meeting?
I still have to contact the new property owners where they were looking at placing the Marriott Double Brand Hotel, I guess it was, Fair Place, and I forget the name of the other hotel. Townhouse Suites, yes. So I have a note to call them and see if they're still interested in developing that site.
So the one off Forney Road?
So one off Forney Road, yeah, next to the In-N-Out Burger there on that hillside behind.
A meeting, do we have a next meeting in two weeks, or do we know?
We don't have any items for the next meeting. It's looking like November 1 would be the next meeting.
Good.
Is that the election day? No, the 8th.
Uh, no, that's the next, yes.
Good, okay, good. Yeah, I wanted to make sure we're in the clear there.
Let council work for the rest of the time.
Any other matters from Commissioners?
I have one quick question that I just want some clarification on from, that came up tonight about applicants being present. Is that expressed to applicants that they must or should be present at these meetings?
So it's not a requirement for them to be present. We do, when we reach out to them, actually, when we take in the application, we give them a timeline of when we expect it to be before Commission. And then when I reach out, providing the public notice, we ask them to let us know if they can't be there. Okay, thank you.
And on that point, I think that's a good question. I wouldn't take the position I take on everything, because some things are, in fact, very simple, not controversial. This project, I actually wanted to talk to the applicant about the historical monument, so it wouldn't be in the condition, it wouldn't be in the motion, so I was deprived of that. This property was controversial when we did the demolition. If this were my property, I would be worried about running the risk of somebody from the community being unhappy at what happened, being here to speak against it. That's my thinking. And then with the windows in the historic district, you know, or what was the other project up at Bedford, the other street up at Bedford, right?
Blue in them windows?
There was something, yeah, and so there were questions about that. We were deprived, so, you know, I don't like being deprived the ability to ask the applicant questions about something. If something's got to come before Planning Commission, there's money involved, you know, I would think it would be important enough for you to come. I get maybe the cell tower people, of course, they're always here, but I mean, I could see some other, yeah, right, I could see some other entities maybe not showing up. For me, that's just my philosophy. If you're bringing something that we have to consider, I might want, I might have questions, and I want the opportunity to ask you questions, so.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I don't wholly disagree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just was curious what the communication to the applicants were prior to our meeting, so that I have clarification on what they're, I understand your desire, but I wanted to know what their understanding was and their level of request that goes to the applicant, so that's why I asked for clarification on it. I totally understand what you're saying, and I think it is helpful, but I just was curious, you know, with putting, either holding up things or making decisions based on their presence or not, but I understand what you're saying, and I agree for the most part on that, but.
And your question to staff was a good one, too, and I would hope we would encourage applicants, hey, it's a good idea for you to show up. I mean, you know, we really encourage you to show up, it's, you know, it's pretty simple that way. That's a good question.
All right, any other items from Commissioners? Nope, so we will move on to item number 14, adjournment. It is 6:59 on Tuesday, October 4, 2022, and I am adjourning the City of Placerville Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you.